Kalaangan, kung may pagodan ang pinapunta ng Uyakubur Kasanti kay Sakyriawat. Ranwat niyalen, October 1, paraan kawonuriya kitrye seksilu. Horanwat, karuye seko nawan, Uyakubur Kasanti kay Sakyriawat. San salma, Uyakubur Kasanti kay Sakyriawat, yey, Uyakubur Kasanti, babangkaym sakala, sabulmatayl, piningko kusume kay Sakyri. Aruta, buwau, mentabutaylen, nan tuya nga paliyata, totoongkan koros, molumseglan sabulmatayl tian toto. Kalangan kavan katla, papatrola mo'tayl, hayban tabutayl katta. Uyakubur kawonwat, o iban tabuta, Senator Anuili.
Kalaangan kung may Speaker, ampaton san sal, karoos nan kubur. O main samachal. Purtena wasa beset, kaciyo kapung kama tan. Kailai, sabulmanke to chungalanpi, leita, aska, kubutu se la chungal. Rakan, masan kaci may sam, sepeki, humuyan katskidu sa buymungin sarawut, bantakci, o, emen emen. Yati chow yata, pilipin na tan maawun kuli tonki. Ayan, masabaki ya suwat main sam. O yiyang, emen emen beach, kubutu, kato kan, demason kan, bilka, sana maaw. O, simple ka kalerka, kawitin atay men ta se ma, epan kaisin suw. Yey, kuburamuyan puitan an mo'tu, kusman. Kung rael kan, me katjen, kuburwats, tawyalamalamwats nan kalari. Bantil karon, orong, opil kosa, naga rael chungal lamalam kuburarael kan, antil taksonama. Ayan, met, may showwaro, kakad wuyen kuchedikorosi, o sakarit. Sabul momi yeros Jesus Christ.
Kalaangan, Senator Joseph, chay, akert akert lamoldayl, rukin ayel loilo, nung chungata sabulmatayl uyakubur kawonwat. Senator Abraham, aimay. Senator Fito Abis Jr., Senator Isaac Altuwi. Senator Riti Carl, aimay. Senator Tagert D. Daniel, aimay. Senator Sense A. Etkar, aimay. Senator Wolford H. Edmund. Senator Stevie J. Edwin, aimay. Senator Brian T., Senator Jack S. Herr, kasuliniar no. Senator H. Dana J. Jones. Senator N. Joseph, aimay. Senator N. Joseph, aimay. Senator Senator Lina Leka, aimay. Senator Michael Mike Loyola. Senator Kastin Dasi Ludwig. Senator Magari Michael. Senator Olines Movic. Senator Sheldon T. Neff, etne aimay. Senator N. A. Perez, aimay. Senator Mr. A. Simila, aimay. Senator Jason A. Walter, aimay. Main Mr. Speaker, aimay. Thor Mr. Speaker. Kalaangan, damatay, Chief Clerk, honetay ban tola, ayman huli antay diyo, yasabulmatayl sakaratan kapin. Molum, sakaran milsi ko kapin lap, bangkuburana nilap. Kailipunipona roxo, antonpi, paula, bangkuburansoko, sabulmanrekonko, nan kenyeiko, manalimko, nan kenyeiko. Wangki sabulmalabalap, kaitikoros ngalaliyentiyak, pomocho, o government. National, state, o local government. Wangki Kabinan Bumbi, Honorable Oliver, wangki koryawun Kabina, Honorable Yoranes. Wangki shong kabulabalap, Honorable Joseph, yang amu shong kabungan koros. Wasaksit wangki Vice Speaker, Low Leader, Honorable Senator Kan Koros. Lamulang samuro, oliso seriso, so masakan, o, labalapkan koros. Chay koros, nan chamberwats. Men puntu koros nan kala, liken kala. Chay, kaciyan ngasabulmatayl uyakuburay luke, koros, enyang patyong uyakuburun kawonwat. Kalangan kavan katla mo'tayl, umay kuburya, iban patawan, urayu. Kamelo lamakasumpal, o, tanamoin apaliala, muan atay ban katkatlan ang yepur. Kailil, ipatawan, sabulmatayl resolution yuma, chay, sainlaraya. Show kamanaman, Congress override, and President Feeto. President, Speaker and Congress, Kabinan Roypa. Patroponet, patroyan, nan winyap, okosa ney tume. Kabin, eight percent madam pralang, national government. Uyanti, yey, o, katskidu sa patawanlo, Congress kukin, en ten percent. Kayata, nenek pen sang eight percent. Kusume kubash, President Feeto, kabrodiya eight percent. Kabrota ten percent. Ikasambalki, wagwats, puti, epitata, muni kan, mabanta, patyang amarga, romana pali, memenuhuni, o, molum, environment. Ikasamb, service kan, me katay sabulmanki, metroto, o, anan, and state kan, Congress ab, uyasongan kemukit medu atumi. May manu, katay kamanara, resolution, sainar resolution, ayu. Namim, resolution wadha karwaro, hon, honable karwaro, aypan itiata, committee dimen. Bantakan apali, resolution. May kubry, punta, uyanti, obsi Speaker, Vice Speaker, Michael, member, Low Leader, Abraham, member. Puki muni kato epitata, sector, molum, education, health, o environment. Senator Leka, member. Senator Akside, sang balian health, member. O, Senator Carl, sang environment, member, o, imapan, Senator Carl, mabangria, Chairman Special Committee. Imet, mainban patawan, o, yet, resolutiono, iban patawan yang Chief Clerk, yasainangar, committee dimen. O, namatay, komale, patawan yang Chairman, resolution. Kalaangan, dan koros.
Speaker, bonapurgage.
Kumu, Senator Perez.
Kalaangan kung, Mr. Speaker. Hori bar yang patro, haituan we, iban, paraan yaknud, ten baswats. Kailim, anbarawan tianki, haituan sakaratan kapin. Wau, ban kuburan samatayl ko, labalap, puri pi, kuburang san sal, rana mani man tayl, chawatki, sabulmanu, tuanu pi kailai. Uyam trowita, marayn ranwat. Wangki Speaker, wangki Vice, floor, opinuwangi, we, anumabers koros, horailkan, uyang gatain, nan kaleru ranwat. Imin man trowangi, wawat, angkat, pitdabu raelkan, bete, uyang roydiyan, o, misosan media kan, romana samuray uyakuburun ranwat. Mr. Speaker. Kawore, ayfot, and bagon. Ranwat, niyamanolma, yangu tayl. Yey, rowanisin kabunna, debil maronggi, sholmaka, niyansawatra, uyak kawon, pinkesilu, nan goyimatinle. Men barawan, pogi, iyolat, kholmenat, mayt, men barawan tabutak tayl, mkat, barawan yang, ewila palal, nabolokhul.
Kalaangan, Senator Perez, puki formani, basan saler. Biyado, point of privilege, masilahan, hon, Low Leader, honu Low Leader. Kalaangan Speaker, kung kubry, pichuan, sakertan waw, onkat, patyang nje, wawkan, medzianger. Proto wasaksit, wanggungkomi, Vice Speaker, Honorable Senator Kan, pichuan, wow. Wangki, urayan kan, nepatyang jail, nan kalari, may sing ranwat. Patjen, wawat, pichuan, ranma, onkat, men puntu korosme, pp yan, radio kan, teman kbc kan. Speaker, kung kubry, onkat, pangsya, pego wau, ayangkat, pangsya. Kpc, pego, nan, osan, lamalam, megistet, may sing ranwat. Iban, bazon, kairakati, raelkan me, patyang jail, nan kalari, onkat, san sal. Banjat kita, obsi sap, mayay, Chairman, Chairman, uh, Borin sap, yey, John, Mr. John Akanaka. Yeng, Royd, Max Leben, uraykan, nepatyang sang, tan, kentang, kentang sap, may, yey, directorin sap, yey, Mr. Abraham. Nepatjen, yey, Speaker, Med, legislature, yey, Speaker, Mayor Rico Wintolin. Urayan kan, nepatyang, wala kad, yey, Mr. Wilson Anton, Mr. Marina Martin, o, Mr. Britain Paul. Urayn, piningaramas kesambalki, mayang patyang jail. Menen, sososet, win puntu, katsakasaka business kesambalkan, iban patyong tsapkita, Mr. Megan Sisenta, me, langlangi, punt, mission chakayu. Mr. Juan Padlinen, nung chungalkat konut, mataun, mataun langu. Mr. Richie Haddon, mabiliyang ya, sawasabang telekom, Borin telekom. O, Miss Carolyn Keller. Mabilpatyang jail, nan kalari, main speaker, yey, Mr. Gasti Shonper. Mr. Henry Panwano. Mabilnya, riyanan, manakap sang, Wpp Sabuabuk, yey, Mr. Tasiano Elken, o, Mr. Kenzi Ponti. Main speaker, newa, mentabutak jail, nan kasamuray, yey, labalak. Speaker, Speaker.
Kalaangan, Low Leader, puki formani, me, tokwe, urayko, mayang patyong jail, nan uyakuburun ranwat. Kalaangan, anoloko, liyoko, pukiya malta, kan patyang legislature, nan uyakuburun ranwat. Kalaangan, biyado, point of privilege, Kumu, Senator Altuwi.
Kalaangan, Kumu, Mr. Speaker, muni iban, state ay point of privilege, chay, minpatjen, sabulumisakaratan kiponiwa, medziangeranindang. Melen, nan molwats, ey sakaratan wanggungkomi, Vice, floor, o, honorable member, koros, o, koros, nepatyang jail, nan, e, molwats. Mr. Speaker, kan, rouseyche, sakaratan kbc, may sang low leader. Melen, rukis kaciela ka, eh, uraylagan, nepatyang jail. Melen, san salma, eh, niyablol, ol, olanway, olansokes, may san sal, iminagische, kaciela paala, eh, kbc kan. Eh, san salma, Mr. Max Leben, uyaj sumas. Sumasen, kusapwir, o, adilya, kawonin lebidi, eh, kayo. O, bilmen kbc, eh, rukis kabungala, Elken, eh, Tasiano Elken, eh, olansokes, man kantigan, olan, eh, Sabuabuk, mena. O, bilmen kapacayang, may Marianas, eh, Martin, yimakatung, konatski, eh, sang, nambutak, sautel sokes. Ayan, met, saikatski, yang rael yo, nabolok. Speaker. Kalaangan Speaker, pogi, payangwa, me, mia. Kung kubry, puyingkat, pata, namatan balang, Senator Daniel Labanwana, Senator Latore, o. Pogi, payang broong, tones esepay, aman, ol pasombaling kudhi. Me, akapungkanat, nankrong kusa. Kinsesososaromas, tubusang mikoyokan, dodon, tubusawkan, entonten. Nankrong kusa, nanpallet, yimabodokkoyulas, angolmabkoryolas, nanpallet, yang kantidetkanin, win kudhi. Yey, kantidet, eh, pechun, Harvey Paul. Iman, kudalengkat, kotkyong, bulay maulu, kuday kotkyong maulu, bulakot.
Kalaangan, Vice Speaker, biyado, point of privilege. Masilahan, ayman kabungkiyang Senator Ko, Rael Nyongayar. Point of privilege, abon mahangi, Rael. Melen, men puntu, kay, nepatyang jail, nan uyakuburun ranwat. Kalaangan, olokong, digyo, o, chay koros, mayang patyong uyakuburun ranwat. Masilahan.
Speaker, kung kubry, pogi, eh, layton, aramas, ol, lonway. Iman, pabu, momotuwat, kan, ka, tonesa, ol, aman, sang furan apes. Mewa, omun kiyolat, antonpi, yang kas, kasamutu, mayn diki. O, kasamugra, ilabalat, Mr. Hamish, o, Mr. Porter.
Kalaangan, Vice Speaker.
Point of privilege, eh, Mr. Speaker.
Kumu, Senator Altuwi. Mia, manakapman, neplapjen, patyolong, san salma, manakapwats, nan, piliyan, kamaton, me, melen, makusku, maturju. So, chay, magakateri, yey, kautensio, chay, patyo, patyo, yang masio, labalahan, nabolok.
Kalaangan, Senator Altuwi, puki formani, may san sal, sang kumi. Biyado, point of privilege, masilahan, iban, po, flow leader apor.
Kalaangan Speaker, kesa bali, chuan, skorin waw. Speaker, muna, muni iban, patyola, wetakemukitay, main, sagarmusibwagi, kbc kan, eszinon, san sal, may patyawan. Chiangki, ho, kapungkiyang, raelkan, kaciela payro, kabunganar, kbc kan. Main speaker, newa, mentabonu. Yata kemukitop, pogi, modu, jangkat, kabandela, boy ben, sang jail channel.
Ayan, main, ayan, main.
San sal, kemukit, sang flow leader, chay, nan kabandela, watawatwalal, tan channel. Pukiya mia, utuban kemukitop, chay, kabandela, watawatwalal, tan channel. Kumu, flow leader.
Speaker, isambalki, waw, onkat, patpatsoze. Iman, pinoy sakarom, okasambalkoze, pogi, chay, nan, suspend order of business, o, ketsi abali, nan beisak silu, mayay, unfinished business.
Kalaangan, flow leader, san sal, kemukit, chay, nan beisak silu, yey, unfinished business. Pogiya mia, utuban kemukita, chay, katkatya, ban unfinished business, ol, ban tonesa, Chief Clerk.
Legislature, Bill number flipki, Mesa Ponola, and Lisa Prabu for an act. Adding in chapter eight to ten twelve Bombay code, relative to the inclusion of the state service tax. Appealing chapter four of day twelve of the Bombay code, and for other purposes, o, watwak kayo.
Kalaangan, Chief Clerk, flow leader, kumsawas.
Kalaangan, Speaker, newa, mentabawan, yata kemukitop, pogi, modu kesambalkoze, jangkat, lamalam gi. Kebetahan kusunet, nan, silubu, may sang bano, labenya, uyakrya, wawat kayo, watwak.
Kalaangan.
Kemukit san sal, dyan, kaciyan, anmas, Senator, kemutan, kusunet, silubu, may sang bano, labenya, uyakrya, usabulman kita, nabolok kayo. Rosmudung kemukitop, masan iyi. O, masan iso. Kemukit puita, chay, katkat, nanmas, Senator, kemutan kusunet. Pogi, pogi, kalaangan, kusunetwot, utro, iban tonese, uray, may utro, melen, Senator Haris, mayla kemukitop, utro. Pilwats, o, kawo, wetak kbc. Kalaang broong, Speaker, muni iban, patoy, pateng, om chungal, desa momi. Sakarang kiponiwa, olab, mukon triangkiir. Nan molwats, yey, waw, onkomi Speaker, Vice Speaker, Michael, Florida, Abraham, gue, Honorable Senator Kan, korusyan. Melen, waw, tokwe, irlabalapkan korusyan, yang patyang train, nan kalari, o, ir, men puntu kan, koros. Patyang kamu, kbc, kapungwagi, argak, puligidi, raelan, seuran, kapatyan, train ran. Hey, waw, ranma, tokwe, rael, men puntu kan, me, yang patyang train, nan, men kbc, train kan, meraca, yang, radio internet. Melen, ranma, tokwe, rael, may koloniakan koros. Speaker, muni kusunetwot, san sal, yey, maurin kusunetwot, ban kabagata, yu, sangun tax kop. Kadangi service tax. Hernan kusunetwot, tr, eblu, sheda, sangun business activity taang, aykan, me, ban, sangun taxwot, ban, eh, kokowong. Her, one, kemutan, umiyanan kemutan, kus, one, announce, me, san sal, nan kemutan, kusunetwot, amini, percent silu. Percent silu, ban, assess, o, sabiskan korusyan, me, mini ponang, tralalimau, kotan. Sang korosme, mini banang, tralalimau, surman yang, taxwot, surman yang assessan. Urayu, main, kasaleda, san salma, nan, yunglang, kusunetwot. O, muni, song song, karayay, pogi, kemutan, kusunut, kusunetwot, abdolong, agiswari la, nanpar, uyagit, uyajakryaw. O, muni, song song, menen kusunetwot, dan, toto, chaptan, nanpar, uyagit, uyajak silu. Amo, molwats, ban kubry, sawun man kita, te, kamanalak, kusunetwot, anyalak, dupsong, toto, antonpi. Amu, mia, eh, uktagla, bananan, kapdolong, boinko, kabali, nan, eh, palikawaluon, kemutan, kusunetwot. Melen, nan, lain, isak, eh, isu. Angka kabali, sang, chen mori, par, uyagit, uyajak silu, o, chen mori, par, uyagit, uyajak payu, teruwan, ancho yuma. Pening kagalak kusunet, angka, gawang, uray, community kan, business community, private sector kan, korusyan, me, ban, uyasabis. Me, kusunetwot, ban, tokwe, kbc, ma, onkat, kuyawi. Eblu san salma, mia regulation, pelen, kagalak, kusunet, ban, belkawata, ban, gakabali, uyaban, kusunetwot. Andiorala, be, substance, me, mia, nan kemutan, kusunetwot. Andka, andka, tr, kawata, yu, uyaban, yu, sangun tax toro, likin sales, may state can impose. Aba, ban, mini, percent silu, o, ban assess, o, sabiskan, me, isape, ban, mini, ponang, tralalimau. Sang korosme, sang limau koti, surman yang assess, percent silu. Kalaangan, broong, Speaker, o, bilwot, yenyu, intuserban, melen, Senator Watson, mupayni, kumtang, kusunetwot, andu yon. Kawit, kalaangan, broong, Speaker.
Kalaangan, Senator Harris, puki kbc, yang kemutan, kusunet, me, mia. Biyado, masan, puki, Kumu, Senator Akside.
Lah, main, Mr. Speaker. Ay, sakarang, kiponiwa, on, patjen, chung, on, sakarin, hilang, melen, ir kalapko, puntu yunzak. Patjen, chay, two litero, or two yara, kpc kan, me, yang ketch, nan kalari, kabretrang, mualich. Isak dangwa, main, Mr. Speaker, Vice, Speaker, gar, Michael, two liter, Abraham, honor members kan, ukchay korusyan. Patyong, ten, otter kan, mia, huwong, kusunetwot, pogi, tinang, huwong, kaita, poinen, na, kots. Umn, koba, uyokokota, parak, chakalap, eighteen percent. Chay, lapjan, sakstang, kofit, achab, ilkachi, yu, aramas, percent silu, amun, kijik, percent silu. Chay, lapjan, alayti, fishing fees, revenue share, eblustre char. Tenet, billa, ban, generate about ten million. Generate, milumaw. Generate, angsis wokit. Charge, aramas, ten million, aramas, na, ban, poinen, ati. Sang, sabis, me, ban, charge ka, rent in office ka, hotel ka, eh, videotaping crews, advertising ka, well you. Health clinic, trying, ab, melen, wasa koyu, kamentan, bank, ban, poin, percent silu. Puc, ban, poin, percent silu, telekom, ban, poin, percent silu. Sang, sabis, ka, iban, charge, percent silu, is, me, ban, koyu, lokoki, nan, nyawu, kolonia, sokes, net. Uwasa, magolokol, hotel, telephone, Puc, sangka, uray, me, ban, koyu, lokoki, percent silu. Generate, ten million, milumaw, aparamas, na, ban, poin. Chay, sa, quality fishing fees, or, everything revenue, ayah, napit, puwak. Ay, tan, huwong, sang, kusunet, kaita, poinen, kopa. Chay, song song, kaitu, poinen, kopa, ayah, kai kaitu. Ayah, bit penalty, zinape, five thousand or five years in jail. Dhar, tugul, ah, sukaski, ticharan, zor, no, patyokaman. Yichin, menpatjen, most, main, Mr. Speaker. Kusunet, we, konen, men, puren, keepen, kusniskan, o, korusyan, melistin, nape, rom, rael, yeren, kapachapachipwak. So, ajibilwak, koytina, ape, kong. So, aji, bluwa, koyu tinape, aga, kalangan, main Mr. Speaker, oh, korusian
Aki, bu, in proresima, German finance, yes, olo, kawatan, ildebe, German finance, Senator Joseph Kamuy
Kalangan speaker, muni ban pa jo, dijual sakaratan Ranmao, kapungwaao, ipon, yang kapachamokum Uliyang kudian, momotuot, okalela lang, o sakan, magolak, etoka Mongki komu, Vice Speaker, floor leader, honorable member kan korusio, bil pa cheng Tonasa, tabon mangin, floor leader, railekan, uyayor Railekan, bekats, tabachan kalari Speaker, yang pa joan sayin, oh, uchun, kosonet wet Haru, ipen, mutaan, okonan Chai, nalati, kupuran, business Haru, pagi, eh, so, ta opportunity Amia, poin, kakaliati, kuprara, la, ima, muing chai, nan masan iki Omay amia, chi, kawit, maorakak Ah, melon, ya Nanana, chalen kak assess, service business kan, ah, moma, chalen, ew, kupan Public, ala kawit, in private, oh, uyadak, asantiyu, maon, palikorus Hap, it's main speaker
Kalangan, bu, in proresima, yatalak, magalak, tamil, maray, komu, sir, agalak, dun Lah, Mr. Speaker, ray tumolwa, kapataba, melon Padang, sahun, sawar, tang, kaybani, wa olak, nan amia, yar, ong komu Vice floor member kan, ongki, raikan, mayang padang chalenan kalari, ranwet Urai kan, nipipian Men kbc akan, ray tumol ranmao, nisang, men pompekan korus Oh, Mr. Speaker Padang, tam, German finance, kasalaka Pagi, omun, sabilmatal, kosonet, bukats Tager, unilateraly, pass it without public hearing Haru, ya kesemb, pagi, urabukat, pansay, uy pokon I Ibil, sudor Uriel kan, ban kaleleba, oh, amia, kosonet wet Eh, or, tam, uy, sense of legislature, niya, se, Mr. Speaker, ban, kaman, ata, urabukat, pagi Trezura, leati, out, aben, uray kan, ban, melon, kosonet wet, pansay I, iam, kan, melon, eh Uta, kesembal, public hearing Kan, uyaw, on, tam, tayban, so, tai, uta, magtayban, pulikan, magtayban, uyatan, an maluwa Haru, may bang, uchun, kupro Oh, amia, oh, pil, magutrol, uta, i Pro, isokak Ndamma, i, kamel, kamel, tam, amia, ma, uyaw, i, ibilmen, chalenka, koordan, uray kan, ban Eh, abali, kosonet, bukats, rangak, yang, patawan, da, daket, kita, ia, sabilmal, raile, pepe, netit Kosonet, kaim, magtayban, kamanalan, ndapre, ma, manama, ningutrol, ni, maya, tay, kalangan Speaker, kalangan, bu, in proresima, Senator, maya
Iba, yang, pato Eh, tumol, segrun, wa olab Ongki, yangkiir Sobul, ditong, nan, wasan, amia, la Oh, Vice Speaker, floor leader, or ye, honorable senators kan korus Ray tumolwa, antoke, ir, lalabak, oh, okor, yang padang, chalenan kal Speaker, i, ensay Kamutang, patpat, momotay, pompekan, nan jiho Nkap sansal, na, i, nan kamutang kosonet wet Dhar, tayban, liyang, uchun Kawitkan, men Kelya, bugi Ah, uyaban, totoki, onka, amia Onka, puranang, business community, uray, nkap, yang, sabilmang kita, tumolang kita, anjor, uray, niyang, input, on, tam, ban, kayu, konan Ira, riya, ami, min, sayran, nan kamutang, pa, sansal, lan, su, set, kiyo Ransay, tam, magtay, song song, uyah, sentu wet, tam, ban, uyah Esansal, nan kamutang kosonet, me, sentu wet, the kamutang kosonet wet, ma, ban, uyala, kosonet Esentu, ban Registration Ong, sto, sakan, kasandir, ma, ban, kalan, uyah, internet, so, bil Ira Nan kamutang Apit, uyaban, atay, ban, assess, serkan, oten, ban, impose, three percent, onga, atay, ban, eh, service Niya, ya, on, introducer, kak, kawit, ya, on, atay, ban, assess, service, on, three percent On, assist, eh, poinan Ami, na, ban, ban Businesso, on, three percent, nisewa, ti, uyar, tarat, lal O, we, sang, r, men introducer, kamutang kosonet Kapre, la, kata, man, gan This Ok, tayla, abil, eh, tonbe, abtaya, ma, ok, tayla, le, diar, fifty percent, and, tam, obla, ok, tak But Number, increase Haru, iki, spill, om, nige, short, an, ke, paykasal Amia, iki Eh, laut Ak, tay, bil Taw, mat Revenue, napali, sang, matay, sabiskan, on, aramas, in Sang, kawar, war, ke, kame, kawit, amia, na, konan, man, puranang, ra, business community, kan, uray, nkap, yang, trou On, nan kamutang, utan, okonan, uyaw Purla, ibam, ilto Nan, nare, ne, iba, i, principal, in, tok, yang, sum, eh, kamutang kosonet, yu, ban, utro, oh, sudar, le, to, korong Il, korong, om, na, konan, yang, kasalada, kuprara, angka, sansal, na, tumol, ito, pan, sudam, amia, on, kamutang, wet, kalangan
Kalangan, sedem, maya, lak, asmasan, sedem, maya, lak, sedem, kor Kamu
Kalangan, main speaker, ah Nkap, pa cheng, kupurakan korus, melon, padang, sabilmamui, masan, segrun, kapung Kaybani wa, me, pa jo, yar, nilang, ey tumolwa, olab, bang kupromi, wang, the Vice Speaker, floor leader, or, rey, yar, honorable senator, kor, senator kan korus Oh, bin, men, doko, yang, ey tumolwa, uray kan, jone, uy, kesembal, me, padang, chail, me, sang, ranwet I Yang kesembalki Ujang, tetok, metu, wet, metu, ki Uta, ban, king, saywata, korus Men ponde, yo, iray kan, ban, bin, pa jo, de, ponde Haru Ibil, wat, wat, kosonet, wet Uta, nasud, sansal, ya, on, service tax Abil, sudar, sansal, ya, on, man, taiban, kak, song Present silu, wet, niya, ban, patosan, ni, poinen, sabisk But Ibil, sudor, pato, on, on, man, amia, business, kinnet, ki, sabisk, butin Mene, ray, magin, uyab, businessin Sei, sey, li, la, pek Haru Ibil, jongon Uyaban, tax, metu, wet, metu, ranwet Kesembal, on, chay, ponde, ki, ki Ponde, yaki, uyakau, on, kanen, tax, na, uy, uyaw, min, duwan, ruwasin, pasan, kosonet, in, kesembal Sansal, ma, ranwet, tax, marugiri, ta, ponde Laut, sang, tax, marugiri, ta, nan, uy, silu, me, pa cheng, chay, kapad, bene Ab, niya, sum, magin, nen Agin, nen, wadmang Er, kanen, tax, kan, mom, mom, kud, ranwet Ededan Melaut, ruwiri, ta, ponde Niya, sum, magin, nen Ruwagin, dia, ngamur, ponde Haru, i, kapungki Oh, kairu, kupukukurama, me, amia, ren, iray kan, men introduce, kosonet, wet Ah, main, wasa, to, on, kosonet, wet, anana, kamaola But, kawit, or, alap, amia, moni, patawan, kosonet, wet Tenet, tax, wet, ban, on, ati, ra, me, pato, de, ponde And, duwan, entinta Korus, me, patpadi, ponde Haru, kesembal, chay, rin, kupu, kure, jongan, tax, metu, wet, metu, ki, pinan, ruwasin, pasan, kosonet, in, ponde Dogol, government, kam, kud, patawan, ta, business, laisen Esang, tetok, wet, de Ele, yang, dogol, government, ka, arsola, kari, yang, bin, patawan, yang, tax Metu, wet, sir, tax Ma, insu, wet, mom, mom, kit Nan, dogol, government, in, win, net, on Tukso, kan, korus, men, net, net, la, nan, win, net Haru, tax, niya, sum, magit, ki, kosonet, eh, may, ten, dogol, government And, yang, patawan, ta, tax, esud, ban, song, dre, yu, nan, uy, kok, korus Ah, utan, matamataon, service tax, min, duwan, i, patawan Eken, amia, bu, kaiti, tax, magin, po, yang, pone, tukso, me, eken, patawan, manufactured Ayat, duwan, posode, tukso, eken, yata, ponde Ok, taylan, katin, ki, la, tax, yu, oh Kabrata, service tax Uta, service tax, niya, sum, eh Eken, mom, kit Eken, on, uray, me Patol, on, to Haru, kosonet, wet, main, kosonet, ma, yu Ah, main, ay, sawi, ipa, cheng, uray, kom Sabilmangki, paykasal Ujang, kosonet, wet, utan, kawit, ben, amia, sang, private sector, bu, ra, no, utan, mangi Tax, ma, gametek, te, sudakametek Wasakis, nan, kosonet, wet, de, bil, kosonet, me Nan, sompun, korus, niya, isak, lima, un, sompun, korus, a, tax, marugiri, service tax, marugiri, ta, nasum, uyab, ampu, iku No Main, ele, iman, kamel, le, me Inting, tam, kosonet, wet, bil, kake, sudar, bayan, kupukukurani, ra, kom, introduce, mesansal, eh, main, main, yang, asu Kusolang, na, kaisa, ke Wa, problem, ne, amia, oh, uray, kan, me, ele Government, bil, pu, ban, cheng, pagi, i Business community, eh, bil, yang, kama, kama, or, tetok, in, government, to, to, tax, marugiri, ta, poin Haru, amia, aray, tumol, kawit, esabilmal, ra, kawit, nan, tetok, wet Haru, pa cheng, kupurak, ah, nkap, koyak, tetok, wasa, ranwet Oh, kupur, kul, lang, kamin Kalangan, main speaker
Speaker, sansal, senator, tal, speaker, polisima, senator, ahi
Kalangan, speaker Iwa, on, ya, bay, bay, ban, kupurkan, korus Iksakar, misik Muing Ele Xiang, ang, par, ketu, ku, tu, usik, i, tuk, tetok, on, government Le, ranwet Omay, i Tumal, ngid, matamataon Xiru, bak, patawan, na, matamataon, sudum, ah Ni, patawan, da, kosonet, wet, ro, ketchembal, ida Melon, uy, gunun, sang, parriyegit, riya, sekrial Le, ranwet, three, kaim, seklaan Haru, kesembal, kiba Matamataon, amia, sang, member kan Melon, ni, kaweban, kosonet, imin, taynon, pasan, da, sang, ni, utan, watwat, kanen, ei Katar, bu, kanen, ei, kosonet, wet, dan, uyaw, yar Ma, asan, kan, de, pato, kan, apu, yaw Takut, service tax Ami, nide, me, kak, kasalada Ujang, tax, silu, me, business, kan, pupain, riaw, ranwet Abon, ponde, tax, yut Makchay, kamanala, government, then, state government, impose, on, business Sales Ita C I D, that's a national law Sales, tam, assessin, fresh sailing, commodity, kan, me, imported Service tax, me, kosonet, ujang, jong, komu, wet Aban, assess, on, sabiskan, na, uyaw, yang, armas, nan, nan, pompey Na, iken, sei, sei Ay, charge, armas, me, sayang, kotalal, ma And, duwan, ujang, kosonet, wet, service tax, surban Na, i, charge, armas, me, sayang, kotala, isak Ay, present, silu, un, tralal, isak, ban, assess Tu, edo, sabiskan, intu, on, dam, kosonet, ujang, ujang, on Renta, li, lik, goodman Ay, ni, ninsa, chal, nan, kosonet, ujang, ujang, sabiskan, ban, yaw, ban, tax, ban, assessan Ami, tre, ban, atar, bo, imaw, tre, ban, assess Kasalada, medana, ban, increase tax, isto, yang, kamel, le Position of effort of expanding the tax base Tax space, me, amia, Bombay state, sales tax, ita Uriel, me, import, uray, fresh sale Palila, u, din, aktivit, me, sansal, nan, kosonet, nan, kosonet, eh, rusug, niyang, poren, first, eh, sales tax Ime, kawo, wak, me, it's an expansion, it's not, eh, eh, increase of the tax Ama, may, i, i, isudor, ma, ma, ya, uyapen, ban, nanana, tetok, on, kosonet, eh, me, kesembal, ki Melon, wand, u, u Nan, asan, i, kesembal, ben, tre, tre, tetok, tre, tre, sabiskin, obis Ay, uyab, bayan, me Comment, medana, ban, sugodan, municipal government, kan, isutok, kamel, le, sugodan Pasan, in, kosonet, ujang, municipal government, ka, assess, sir, tax, on, all taxes, me, state, ban, impose Ranwet, kolonia, tam, socash, net, palila, u, wasa, business activity, me, fresh sale, uyaw, yu, uray, me, bayabaya, ma, gis, sir, taxes Service tax, aban, kip, Bombay, pun Uy, la, u, kan, kudri, u, mesote, sales, fresh sale, uyaw, ya, jong, sabiskan, uyaw, lal Municipal, ban, tibir, kawatan, iray, kosonet, me, ban, assess, sir, tax, ban, teen, service tax, me, le, in In, on, the service More expenses, on, ya, consumer Ah I, tetchaw, the economy, works Haru Kalu, utro, on, ime, utro, kosonet, bu, pagi, kesembal, ku, matamataon, amia, nan, kosonet Ibil, yang, chivu, government, service, eh, sutitar, tre, tre, kan Isudor, main, increase tax, ay, kesembal, ku, matamataon, amia, me, eh, for, the expansion of the tax space, amia, me, uyag, itan, ujang, in, utro, le, na, pek Petre, kan, uyaw, ma, stro, kaman, mal, ma Ah Esansal, eh, matamataon, med, med, uyaw, wo, amia, yar, ra, trail, me, trail, yang, kamel, le, me, niya, nan, ben, tre, tre, sabiskan, mesutitar Petrel, kos, kusia, me, melon, kalaut, nan Petre go skusi ya me melal, kalautnan, re gunon sang spishing kalautnan, mo, kambak, hey? Should we stop there? Kalangan speaker.
Speaker, yeah, speaker slav, my group group, we're sama, high speaker, speaker.
Kalangan main speaker, na i tingal sakaran wa ban kupurami. Oni kuflor, ri yu yon orbul, senetos koros, waun ki tirail, wiliyapan opiskan. Tirail membaisen tonpi business community, tonwe yang so bai, ri lamalamen mensamet. Polpoli kajunram awong kapintayama awong don tonpi, nusak. Main speaker, kom kupurak. Yang yaman member me, sign kavunu ta ang kosinet word. Abai tingal, auraman, o matma tauon, shabis word. Niye insu me yang sign bonpulongto, malwo, bitalin katok. Ibel kamelale, ma suto kunung buru. Ab arumash kunung ontou bana, wit karabu main speaker. Ele nan, ay yang yam memberen nine plus leisure, ton mu mu to nine. Yui mu muwut wutmu, koyu su dongdung, matma tauon yu warai. O matma tauon me, tongdung kape in apali, yu yakan watang, ya yuraman abisa matyala, tokou. Ibel, gen padong, wiliyapa jokan me, sang stuk jokan me yu yakan pokapai, yu di padawan me yu nruk. Yui yu, yu yakan me, sawasaw sabul marai, aran tingal government. Na kawit paran. Sayu baler ru kan sometan, batalin katok. Ya mu marai yu ya, ya mu yana tetok. Tongka ku yamun tetok, ni padawan kamelale me, na kateel, kamanala bo yasuk, bo kawatowat koyu. Keteel di tamang kabrola, waale, sawas kawit ben public. Men ristang yu kupur, naab danu main speaker, uteel, mugteel katkatlalunut. Essential resolution yu mugteel koros sign, uteel padowula. Datong shabiskan, mele, present riau bonklima, poin sing tonpi, patlasing ban padpadu olan national government. Shabis ku, tokalang school, tokalang rasama. Scholarship, karmesang nan patetu me abisa, ma sabul metel cerita, danyamu. Dezo anan anu school, minaun, gedezo anan anu kalautela shabiskan. Ma present tochus lau, kela bungbana kaipi obis. Ab main bonpi en yang kanan emi. Speaker, may bangkaraja? Na main bonpi ban, ten ten di ban yang kanan emi, nan service taxo, na kusi, na kutur yu, aban kusi kusi kau kuay, marara. Ela kana ban padotu national government, go mugit di dosang sungkan, pinabialasang toto ku, tirail me ban kuimpesung kopi yang nan, matma tauon. Kaipi neman nekusamarama. Ab, terutuk, tangon kabulun ban ki ayon, utuk, tang kebantuk yang kabrola. Kawit koros, mama, atamil paduan kamelale. Keteel, abai nan watowat koyu, kabrola yang kabul, time motion mantai betus tai. Kamu di yu yu, patok naipurun, bu yu yang koros, keteel di yar buru. O bungbana onwi, na ban koi ta, yang gu non, ma suteel koi ta, ban koi koi. Komu ta yu? Komu takte teba, ma asani me, oh koski yu yu solutioni, buru ban yau. Ibel masak, main speaker, me ton koi sakna yu korona, ban patyila, men kiti de ban. Sinseki es kisme, mutu mutu, ab matma tauon ta taxes. Tari, main ning gu non, gelenka kamanala watowat koyu, kabrola yang kabul, mupai motion, o kui yar buru, main business community, rai me ban kola. Arumash me ban bain. Ibel tokla buru buru, ab gelenka kupurpana watang abang sawasaw, kairi de sabul metel yu, o taxes word, wit me ban kapala. Sudo waksan, feel. Egi sendro padolang, egi sendro padolang, pui buru min tal. Net tanananan, ni na ban yau, tanu ban toku, ton tak sawasa kairi tan yu, o sawasa tyan murkan, na ban pusa rai yu, en government. Fugon war, tukutruk, war seisei, tokawud, kaisu de ban kolo kolo pokola, okel ban galian, a tyan murka anan ei yeyaswa. Karada mistus speaker, man yudan resing glostibet.
Kalangan high speaker, muli ban ponosu, kamu guetang my group, senator, seminar. Oh senator joseph, tabul manki maju ala dia cuma, kami senator.
Kalangan speaker, mo wey duwan, sakretan kafun, ong bini nap, weki rankop, pisingakan mur, biare naman naman train. Kapadang, ay duwan sakretan wow, kapadepat, ong sama komkasanita, pisingan ranwud, kabru etang wasakset. Ong ku gu mi speaker, five speaker, low leader, sonal, pemembus korusian. Iremi mitmetu me, vice kasalad, main sudo me kutai kau yu yang bui, processing, te tok, mugteel, la masan yang sukset. Video me utro, tari, irem matma tauon me yang sukset mugteel masani. Sudo me kutai kau yu yang bui yu, processing tokou, utan, aban utro mugteel masani, tari, reka manala un kurs reading. Tari, matma tauon me tuwalenki, weki yang ka kupurkurang kami di, weki tirail kan me, sansan sang namtali riau, ong matma tauon kosinet de en kak, tepul mau. Tari, mia itu mal matma tauon, boka kupurkurang kami di, tok kami di yang ka yu yu, i ring ong rey, business kan tirail kan den ya rey, chung, komutang kosinet word. Bangka kapali, tali riau, bangka ksonomau, o, bonpi. Mia itu mal matma tauon, ma ban yu yu kamogidi yu sang vice, ay bangkar yu yu, ni meni nap, prosesu bangka te tok, kalangan speaker.
Senator seminar, kami senator joseph.
Kalangan speaker, ban modomotja. Speaker gayu, sudo business iun na isampa ban yang bungki tax. Apo eki yang pitata kosinet, taro genichar kilau, yang ala ta kosinet bung kosanet. Tari, tamme, wiyepen tatau pokakin, muon arail kawit wo me ban, arail option riau. Ei business ban absorb cost, tu ai, na ban pass on the cost to consumers, most likely option riau, ra yau. The consumer ban point. Kasumpal main speaker, weki kamelale me, ba mia wo epen eyu han buhan, child policy maker kau business, na ban kaka chen kawitata. Tamme, chay chupuka ban, yata, sang nipil kasalada mesan salasang senator liyola, amuey ra ban kaka chay char kilam. Main mia mekut business community, chivu kenal government den, yu yu apus chuka, yau yu kichiachi. Tari, main ra ban kaka chay char kilam, when, reki udarak kawit, tu song rey me ban mawung ray. Pokchaygen bak, raise revenue pokakak, apali, irem ra ban kaka chen, kawit ku government den pokok. Songan bua epen pokok, akasumpal. Parengak, keno pemme, mia, arail tuwal de sabul marai, chod the contribution, contribution nan, yi yasin me tonpi. Bepit, kasalada metenek koros ban point so. Tirail akan me ban tatau kosshapiswo, tirail me ban point, mayang akun menitio me patpatu tonpi. Esu de men kawit wo, parbesung me, yang so me, kosinet word ban, yau yu tara, korus yen me tonpi ban point so. May ban tatau kosshabisa, ay ban, gera ban point. Mo, ikara saras. Kuryau speaker, fil mia kosinet nan kalindum, teba watowat kurya me bit, plastic. Tei tei ban impor sang, business karen point, feel, muon, chen quaj. Tari, the same principle, were increasing the cost. Tari, chay lananak kupur mau. Ei penanan buhan pali riau me kuyu mau. We, tamu chay bankak en kunkila kawit penah, ay men tetok, akai ten palijay, yu ngaknan nan chivya tirail palijay. Mentakmaan ki, kupusun du riau watch, asain yang committee en finance, tari, sokoyaku, socharen kakun, committee agak kapali, tatau quaj, tatau pokaj, mu imelata. Wiyepen tatau pokaj epala ta. Ab, yang so me, chay ban kawata policy yu bataan, effect, e pojdi choro ra, me kuyu kusampal wewa penah. Batali, palimba ban, tokokki, ya nipilka kawitata, wiyepen tatau inu bataan mawung ray. Tari, iman chen, go pena unguja gak mia, tari, asan sal me zhoja. Ay mit main speaker.
Speaker. Bagan, speaker. Masulang, ay, padawan, me yu yu motion enutu. Na itupur ban ponosu, senator Perez, naiponosu motion enutu, kami.
Kalangan speaker, i barawan waalbu, motion en yar, abogi yang, uh, sign billud, iman barawan me wort foida. Muon mistu barawan, tamme yang say. Kuyu, niye staid men yu me, uh, barawan me iman kawit wo. Kalogolop, pabar man kosinet word, the sanction kosinet word. Uh, ekian, molungobon, choice action. Sudo ban lautsang, sayalnagit, kaidagaban, kritakalogolobon, sayalnagit. Kak sanction deng, le sayalnagit. Tari, kosinet na yu metkalogolop, ma yu metkian, sunggobon, men, uh, yau yon, e dak kita kalogolop. Kurya, Mrs. Speaker, duwe statement me barawan na le, duwe, ban kaka tu, uh, garoyang shush, e ban yu yu, arumash men, wort misli. Ebot sansan me, sammarandu go, shuraan so me pantalo, shuraan so me matangala. Baghdad bankarawan, sammarandu shin paasan kosinet, ab jannut, ye yu kambutan kosinet me ral yang shushki. Ni yang, utaglawalu, shuro bohong, kambutan kosinet bo, aban uka thala paasan nda pisen. Shuro bohong, aboi ki, ansu, karada, tirail konkurkan pasna, ho rualan yu, yu me thol shushki, o eki poida. Mrs. Speaker, tarawan man padawan me, sammarandu ban yi yas, tananan government word. Ime yang sign ku pulud, sayalgatukat, tamu yang government jenutanut, dinyen, sayalab, kitangak. Sayalbin masak, impor tax, kudane arumash kan de pokoki. Ayun muon government e ban kaka kaya lain, sayang ban impor song tax me, kijal koros ban pokoki penah, enka pokain. Public government, we are the government. Kaidag government, obis yu, akchay arumash liki. People are the government. Keimsila, i, i kairu me, troyendi yu yu song barui isak, ye yu, songan taxu ban karayan. Saman madan government den po biset, e ban kak kisi kartau kaya lain. Karaseber, magtae ban masanu, sayalun kaya ki, appreciation kan sang konkurso, infrastructure of main, yar. Net bonpi, sansalara, bonpi gat pokan pokan. Ye bo, percenten de mesik, mugtae de thang, isanu man, uh, kosinet kosinet diang rosto isin, stodu, ye duwan ma, prosen toku. Tari, i, ye, i karabu yang barawan sign, uh, enka pralang, tirail business community, i barawan me mia jarai laansu. Magtae ban kamayala ban thang kosinet word, songu yu yu kosinet. Arumash di libillibilka challenge, kapalun ban gobung arai ruben pou, o, molungobon ka chenak, o, padawan ta kawit. He has been punished. The president, the government is not good. The public, the public, the public, the public, the public, the government is not good. Speaker. The government is not good. He has imposed taxes, the president, the president, the president, and the government, the government is not good. And he supports the government. And he, he is not good. He has been punished. And he is not good. He is not good. He is not good. The president, the government is not good. Speaker.
Speaker, may I comment?
The president, he has been punished. 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 Mr. Speaker. The president, the president, the president, the government is not good. He is not good. The president, the president, the president, the president, the president, the president, the government is not good. He is not good. The president, 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 the president. The president, the president, the president, the government is not good. You are leader. The president, 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 the president. The president, 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 the president.
Legislature Bill Number 10 P A is a two line, is a two bill act. Adding new sections to Chapter Eight and Chapter Ten of Title Forty Two of Bombay Code. Relative to Marina and Appurtingal Infrastructure on the Subnit Land. Extending from the Faraway Island Shoreline in the Terran municipality. And Designations for Commercial Purposes respectively and for other purposes. You are the president.
Speaker. Speaker. The president, 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 the president. The president, 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 the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, 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 the president. And the president, the president, the president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president.
Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The committee on finance, the committee on finance. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. 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 The president, the president, the president.
Speaker. The president, the president, the president.
Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The chairman, the chairman, the chairman, Joint Committee and Land Warranty. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. 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 And the government, the government, the government. He has been punished. He has been punished. And he has been punished. Business, the business. He has been punished. And he has been punished. The government, the government, the government. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The government, the government, the government. He has been punished. He is interested in business. He has been punished. And he has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. And he has been punished. 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 And he has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. And the joint committee, the joint committee. He has been punished. Speaker. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. He has been punished.
Mr. Speaker. The president, the president, the president. 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 He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president.
Legislature Bill Number 10 P A is a two line, is a two bill act. Amending section ten dash one sixty seven of Title Forty Two of Bombay Code. To designate certain public lands in Kichu municipality. For Kichu economic development projects and for other purposes. You are the president.
Speaker. Leader. Speaker. Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. 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 Speaker. Speaker.
Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. Speaker. The government is not good. He has been punished. 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 Speaker. I am speaking. The president, the president, the president. Commercial Center. The government, the government, the government. Economic Complex. The government, the government, the government. The government, the government, the government. Executory, executive, executive. The government, the government, the government. The government, the government, the government. The government, the government, the government. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. 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 The president, the president, the president. 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 He has been punished. 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 The first foreigner set foot allowed. The president. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. In eighteen sixty. He has been punished. 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 Speaker. The president, the president, the president. Revolution, the revolution. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The government, the government, the government. 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 He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The government, the government, the government. He has been punished. He has been punished. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. Aqua Culture in Lepotop. Aqua Culture in Alumay. Man. Songkutu, Aqua, the president. The government, the government, the government. The government, the government, the government. Hotel, mini-cock, the president, the president. Artificial beach, Songkutu. The government, the government, the government. 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 The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president.
Mr. Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The government, the government, the government. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president.
Legislature Bill Number 10 P A is a two line, is a two bill act. A bill for an act. Amending titles two and three of Table Number Ten L dash one one nine dash twenty three. The Bombay Budget Transmission Act for Fifty Years Twenty Twenty Four. Repeating Title Eleven of Table Number Ten L dash one one nine dash twenty three and for other purposes. You are the president.
Speaker. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president.
Speaker. Wow. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. He has been punished. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president. The president, the president, the president.
Dail, kama albagritu Dail Dail safalar, kawi chairman and speaker, senator Joseph
Kabongalajjual motion main speaker, dada bankadjial nan watawat kayu Kama kijut, dada kadjial nan watawat kayu
Kalangan, money banpolisakama kijuto Ah Event pagita, magdail Maistubasiabongalak, dail metra kualimen Event pagita, dailan Eupeno, kama aman ban katata patrota, dada banshula, sabulman kijut Dail katlay banpolisakama kijut, korusmudung dada kadjial nan masinupi, kama tangkusunet, masaniyey Hei Uang, masaniso Kama kijuta, masinupi, kama kijut, senator Joseph
Kalangan speaker, ye kama tangkusunetwet, pohkutala, pohkutala sapulmatail Pacha transmission act, ye tubishoyu mukajaytiniwkiyong katna Oh, katralang national government, oray pan, pousilang jamko Bunikan mukajayt, kosanidia pohenkakto tok, me pan pachotan nan setter Roboreyam, yo waktadilan nasabuljai CPA mepit Eh, kempan, husumwawu kempan Kamalain Ah, akunang, patakotan wiyawu, pey tubishowut, leban kairi Kairi kijamko me, mio waktadilan nampen Renkakayang pachowan, opilyang utungatau kamanata Ayimet main speaker, kalangan
Benialjual masinupi, kama tangkusunet
Motion and clause
Masojjual, celalay banpolisakama kijut, dada lutung timasinupi, korusmudung kama kijuto, masaniyey Uang, masaniso Kama kijuta, dada lutung kadian, masinupi, kama tangkusunet Korusmudung dada sabulman kita, kama tangkusunet, paki, isisakwono, lebenial riyaiksi lu, aydiwan Uang watawat kayu, masaniyey Uang, masaniso Kama kijuta, dada sabulman kita, kama tangkusunetwet, watawat kayu
Legislature Bill number 42 lai riyaiksi lu, bill one act Amending section one dash one hundred ten of seven forty two of Sunday code Relative to compensation and expenses of the board of trustees of Sunday public land trust And for other purposes, only periyaw, kimsiklang watawat
Banpolisak, flanliptar Kalangan speaker, wow speaker, banpatu wiyata kama kijuto, kapi Listlerwajjual, yo mnyaburki, kama tangkusunet Nambiripwali, lebenial riyaiksi ku, okryaw, okimsaklang watawat
Riyamen
Speaker, isay salamok, kama kijuto Kama kijut, dada kadjial nan masinupi Speaker Kawi Kalangan speaker, men Patu wiyata kama kijut, ngkak Kapandlang, uang Last day of session, committee ngkak Eh, reportlung, okawit, tan, utangkunang munyaw Riyamen Iyak Maupurak, dada kadjial nan masinupi, amotion kakiwuta Ari, ikatungku, aliwku, enakdail Enkak, dada kadjial manan masinupi Iyak Kamukuray, maltorisakama kijut meniya Korusmudung dada kadjial nan masinupi, kama tangkusunet riyaiksi ku, wali, lebenial riyaiksi ku Uang karyaw, kimsiklang watawat, masaniyey Hei Uang, masaniso Kama kijuta, dada kadjial nan masinupi Speaker Kawi, dada dada
Kalangan kawi, mister speaker Ibaruan, naasandan Kamadan kosanitriyaiksi ku, wali, lebenial riyaiksi ku Menin, celap mael Eh, ayoyarel masaniyey Ye kama tangkusunetwet, me ban, amend Seven forty two Section one Dash one one zero Sangmukawut, me bidaylo, dubanaayo Hene, kama din Finance pan, kabotkiyong Kamada'yong, oray baruan, watar Ah, enkak, sanjantban kuburgan Kabot, leban patolong, leban kawit Waktadilan Kamudan, desabmudel, pasanukuto, kosanet, me Title, or section, esurubaregiyang Tan, dada ban masaniyansawut, pin, dada ban masaniyansawut Na, dada ban awi, kawitban financeban patolong Oh, kosanedi Eh, paypuyu, ban uniform, uang pootkan korus Esuruban, waktadala Title forty two Ijama ban waktadala, title, me kosanedi Uniform din, paypuyin and commissions For board Ari, mister speaker, enkak sanjantban kuburgan, me Isurubu, uang Kawitjin finance committee Oh, enkak, dada sanjantban kuburaman, ibaruan, eywkiyong Chairman, men, kralangbak, men, wono, pe isyu Ayimet, sabangdinwe, sabanapali lung Ab, maistuban, sapuni, ibaruan, report, rabanamen, wasavis, me chororang Namisanjan, nan Kamwata'utay masaniyansawut Karada, mister speaker, men, ibaruan Watar kama kijut Weyngotutu, naasandan, kama tangkusunet, wiyabkuwali, lebenial riyaiksi ku, wasabulman kita Uang watawat karyaw
Speaker, riyamen
Money banpolisakama kijuto, ay, maypruwintwanesemaj, chairman and finance Kawi
Kalangan speaker, uangku mael Kasalata, mesanjalasan Chairman and sap Ayimemael Tam, committee patuwan Kadjio, kawunepata, kosanakabot, reportskiyong, watogotoku, mesunkosunet choror Ye Kosunet, me kosanedi, paynan, kijayt, me usushta Itita Beyangaki, board or commission Committee patuwan, pepe, me iwasan Me irea, analan, adwesya Kaya, polapene Oh, itata Isais Ah, code forty two, ye Kosunet, me kawata Board of trustee Ari Tam, committee sabang, apali Kaita evinsen, pachowalong, uniformetiklos, uniformetiklos, pachpachoyen, nan kosanet, me sesongesongen apaliyo Me kadjijijiwi, me kadjaischukal, point, teraktal, kawukbeshang, men dajay, koye, toklauxanati Pill, iran, patamatau, bill poler Portka, me kadjaischukal, point, new port, waksangyo Men dajay, koye, agin chowchowake, maraga Ari, implicationin, kosunetwet, main speaker, men dajay, ban waktadala Code, me sided sang chairman and sapo Aban, bilsereta Kosunet, me sesongesongen adwes Peniyanso, me, aban, shanti isakwono Bilshang, me kawitin sapulmatail, ayjij, epem Me korusya, ananachala isakwono Kapatch, motomotom, me committee patuwan, wya, world looking at over five hundred thousand dollars increase Bunikay, me kadjay, ban katan, patongkiyong, kamaolananal Bunikay, me kadjay, ban katan, patongkiyong Kamaolang program, emnemaa, uang pulupul Chong program, kasumpalkan Ay, implicationin, waktadilan, kosunetwet, main speaker, men dalkan Kalangan kuburmao Quite possibly, sang, ayjij, agilkamelal Peniyanso, me paynan, pootyukan Waktadala, aban, pona pootyukorusya Ari, dada ban sacrifice, against office Me, uyayu, me kadjialan, kak, tapunuki Paynan, port or commission Committee, yang utung Men kosuta Saban kawitku, wiyatan kosantiyu, wakosutaayo, me sapem, me pan, kak, en Sochonon Kakchowchowyala sapulmatail, governmentichayaca Uang, me babil kak sustainable Karasa pek Yatwan ma isakwono, pachota Waktay, paralayu, on trust fund Yatwan masola kanagan trust fundo Ayawasab, aban, pachosangir Kusang, possibilitywak, me, mnyaburkiw Asok, etjengadiyan, kosan, moutara banalachala isakwono Sebarara, paakita Ay, yach, galkanso, main speaker, ye, men, papi Riwaaw, arakarak Kumotan kak Kadjkiyong committee, en, senkak, sipilong, tapong, masawo kawun Ayimet, main speaker, kalangan
Kalangan Chang salam, benial motion, dada lutung timasinupi Ubanpolisakama kijut meniya Korusmudung dada lutung timasinupi, kama tangkusunet riyaiksi ku, wali, lebenial riyaiksi ku, masaniyey Uang, masaniso Kama kijuta, dada lutung kadian, masinupi, kama tangkusunet Riyaiksi ku, wali, lebenial riyaiksi ku, dada ban katlay Kadjial nan main motion Korusmudung dada sabulman kita, kama tangkusunet riyaiksi ku, wali, lebenial riyaiksi ku Oh Waktawat karyaw, masaniyey Togi, dada ban kadjial nan, waktawat karyaw, dada ban ususin Taabulun, senator pres
I, ibaruan, me dada ban, go kon, pohkutwakawat karyaw Ari I Kamgawit Pohkutwakawat karyaw, me kosanetwet, dada ban, dukur Baranaramasow, raban sapamitishow Kamukur
Iba, iba ban wiyawi Eh, peygi, waktawat karyaw, kimsiklang watawat, roll call, ban wiyawi Ili patuwan, iba ban wiyawi Dail, maymangiyar, sabulmatail, patawatunkosanet, kun takryaw Oh, kimsiklaw, karyaw, watawat, kun roll call Togi, kama tangkusunetwet, dada ban Kadjial nan, karyaw, kimsiklang watawat, dada ban kadjial nan, ususin, nil Or roll call, ubanpolisak chief clerk And patolanan, netgalkatov, and dukur amarakan, the roll call
Senator Abraham Eight Senator Artwee Eight Senator Card
Eight nine
Senator Daniel Senator F. Carter
Eight
Senator Edwin
So
Senator Exite
So, so, so Eight
Senator Harris
So
Senator Johnson Senator Caesar
So
Senator Laturo
Eight
Senator Leka Senator Leola Senator Miguel Senator Neap
Eight nine
Senator Perez
Eight nine
Senator Simina
Eight
Senator Walter
So
Senator Johnson Senator Leola Nine, mister speaker
Eight
Hang salam, webagun And ponte, masabulmatail, dada Usus, metoke, kama tangkusunet riyaiksi ku, wali, lebenial riyaiksi ku Usus, wemoiso Ey, isakxilu, me, weyutay kamanalan, kama tangkusunetwet, lan Speaker 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 Kawi, welyt Kalangan speaker, men, tongtongla, maypruwayak, wengkak Polisamaas, amen Ulenwai kesambal, me yang badjang dail Ye Etjwan, kapingkonap, sang Spaw, sohulgin, matelnim, kapatayong, etjwal, woregmen Dagdak dailan, kasangmukiyaw, laglag Mawon, senator Perez Kalangan speaker Iman, patamosen, dada kadjial ban Aydamisakwono, daga riyaman
Eight Riyamen
Dail, kama kijut, dailan Atatiyang, takatiyan, nanbe isakwono Peygi, amia, utupan, kama kijut, aban, polisak, dail Kadtiyong, kabadutiyong, nanbe isakwono Speaker Kalangan, mister speaker Kalangan, mister speaker Eh, kamukur Niye Kamutariyong, me Kaba poot Oh, iban wiyata motionkayu Uang, kama tangkusunet, me dada parila, watawat kenyu Sinubugi isaktuwau, me beniar isakryaw Enasay, naawat, me pincha, po vitisgnation Uyitoke, karyaman
Riyamen
Kam, kabruwaw Speaker Kamudan kosanet, chilubugi, eyisak tuwau Ebliar isakryaw Ye dada napaliila, uang Watawat kayu Ega bapoot Uang, kampin, lan, waranti Oh, wewetan, nan buwanwaiyo, chavain, arandi Imbaruan, me, tam, motion, oh, kim motion, aman Uda motion, entan Kuburwila, nasayutu, kampin, lan, board designation Uyitoke, enkak, ubodan, sashanwet Dail, main speaker Senator Perez, dail Daliapil, makam, patpatuwanin Sinubugi isaktuwau, ebliar isakryaw, me Pan, moni, tawrewe Dada kama almas, speaker Kama Dada ban kama almas Dail, kama almas, men Dail